I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, organization under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Teresa, please do a roll call.
Alderman Montaloni.
Here.
Alderman Hamilton.
Here.
Alderman Slattery.
Here.
Alderman Ben.
Here.
Alderman Broton.
Here.
Alderman Woodsey.
Here.
You have a call.
I'm going to open the public hearing at seven oh one. It's a limited development plan for proposed medical spa at fifty seven oh six South Lindbergh Boulevard. Sarah? Are you already up there? Are you used to this?
My name is Sarah Gerling and I'm a board certified family nurse practitioner. Going to be opening a medical spa offering wellness services such as IV therapy, hormone replacement, vitamin injections, weight loss programs, and aesthetic treatments like Botox, fillers, that kind of thing.
All right. Does anyone from the public have any questions? Anyone? Thanks, Sarah. I'm going to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting at seven oh two. A reading and approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen meeting of May the nineteenth, twenty twenty five. A I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Carol, any second?
Second.
Tammy, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes and the minutes are approved. Citizens, comments, and petitions, if there are any who want to sign up. Reports of officers in committee. At this time, I wanted to nominate Alderman Broton to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. As the city traditionally has a member of the Board of Aldermen to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is any discussion? I will entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Alderman. Well, that's quick. To serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Carol, do I have a second?
Second.
Tammy, second? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Mike, for stepping up in that position.
You're welcome, sure.
Yes, sir. Alderman reports, Marty, you have anything?
No, I do not have anything.
Carol?
I guess I really don't, except you need more people on planning and zoning or supporting the government.
We need a nominee for like a in case someone on the planning and zoning is not able to attend.
I'll have two more people for you before we put the next one.
Yeah, we need at least one, if you can find one to step in as a
All right.
Anything else, Carol?
That should do it.
Michael?
Yeah, I want to tell you about a meeting that I attended a while ago. Kind of fill you in on the background here. Friday, October third, Lindbergh had a coffee and conversation event at their headquarters on Bravo and Savickin. Tony Lake is the superintendent of Lindbergh. He was the one who narrated the slides and the production there. At the conclusion of the program, there were various people, staff, that attended that. And they introduced themselves and said what they were, the programs and so forth that they were working on. Dr. Tara Sparks, who is chief academic officer, was one of the people who spoke very briefly there. And she, she's working on a real world learning program. And that kind of interested me. And I talked with her briefly after, after the closing of the get together there. She was, she was interested in what I had to say. And what I, what I offered was, do you have a program for municipal government? For bringing kids to graduation where they have an opportunity to go into the municipal government and start working their need with the certifications and that. And she said, no, but I think that's a good idea. I'll get back with you. She did. I got an email from her a couple of days later. And she referred me to Julie Durham, who is a real world learning coordinator. Through a couple of emails, I determined that what she wanted from me was criteria, basically, to set up a program for this real world learning program that she, she will have going next year. I, I told her that, that I didn't really know a whole lot about municipal government, but I had a friend who does. And she said, well, bring him along. And I did. And Paul and I, our city attorney, Paul, and I had a meeting with her on Monday, October the thirteenth at nine AM at the high school. It was very interesting. And what came of that, I think, is not only should not only be interesting to us, but to the citizens, anybody that's got a child going to Lindbergh that supports Lindbergh. So Paul will tell you what we learned.
Yeah, so it's super exciting. They have, as Alderman Broton said, a real world learning situation. They're going to be having their seniors as kind of a catch down project before they graduate. Do an internship in some area that they may have some interest in. Because as Julie was explaining, when they talk to students about what they want to do after high school, you know, besides Ford Stars or Dr. Lawyer Nurse, there's not a whole bunch there. And so they really want to show people a lot of other things, including things that maybe, you know, careers that they could get into that don't necessarily either require a four-year degree or can help them get a two or four-year degree while they're working. And so they're real interested in getting, I think, they have already started to talk to the Buffalo Fire District about their paramedic program and things like that. They had placed someone and the City of Sunset Hills just in a kind of a shadow kind of thing. But this year they want to really grow it more. And so we were talking to her about, you know, the, all the areas that municipalities need to have pipelines of people coming through, code enforcement, city clerk, deputy city clerk, and then in the, you know, the larger municipalities, you know, parks and recreation, et cetera. So, so she was super excited about it and we are due. And so we're going to try to hopefully chat with her some more in the coming year about that and getting her in contact with maybe the city clerks association and the code officers associations and the municipality. And try to have, you know, while I think a lot of the kids should get placed in some of the municipalities around here, if there's a chance after that to be hired on full time somewhere. So it's super exciting and we'll keep you posted on what we learn.
Lot of good information.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Michael. Anything else? Michael, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Rod?
No.
Tammy? Paul, does the city attorney have anything to report?
No, he doesn't.
Other than what you just
Yeah, that's a note to man.
Derek, city engineer, do you have anything?
I'll try to keep it short unless there's questions. We're a hundred percent done with the pavement. Majority of it, ninety-nine percent, was done in September. And that was the first time we had it done that early in the year. Normally we're October, November, or December trying to get out of construction based on, you know, there's multiple things that may, may be delays. Whether it's weather, you know, mechanical problems, manpower problems, whether inspections failed or not. So this year we are done in September. We did do about sixty yards of pavement in October, thirty yards on the main road, and then thirty yards in the cul-de-sac to complete the pavement. Right after that, we did eight hundred feet of six-inch vertical curb two weeks ago. SCI did those inspections. And also this morning, we did another eight hundred yards on Green Park Industrial Drive. So we are done with, with vertical curving, pavement. The only thing that's left for SCI to do is to do material cylinder breaks to make sure that we achieve four thousand PSI. And I believe I just sent out one today where we did not achieve it twenty-eight days, but we achieved it in fifty-four days. And that was that last cylinder that we did. One set of seven cylinders or about three sets of seven cylinders to do breaks. And also part of your packet is SCI bill for August, September, and October. You will notice that there's travel time that they bill. And it's back to St. Charles and back. And also overtime. City requires SCI to do all the inspections prior to the completion of the project or prior to the concrete pour. So there are some hours in here for overtime to complete the inspections prior to a concrete pour the next day. So I, I had a discussion with Teresa. And Teresa and Joe were looking at the bills for that so we can continue that discussion on any overtime. Any way we can improve communications with myself, SCI, and then with City Hall. So then Joe and Teresa were included in all of the cylinder breaks and also with the schedule. I would call up and say we're pouring two hundred yards of concrete, we're pouring this, we're pouring that, we're pouring eight hundred feet of curbing. So they were the loop on the pour of the concrete. So SCI as of now is done with field inspections. They do have to go tomorrow morning and pick up the cylinders they made today. You can't move them for twenty-four hours or you could jeopardize them and they will not be, they will be worthless actually. So they continue to do cylinder breaks and that will be in their, in their office. And there will be no travel time or field inspections. You will also have Wagner's bill for September. It is three hundred and thirty-six thousand seven eighty-five. And the reason for that is they did all of the pavement on Lindbergh Business Corp. And did one half of the cul-de-sac. So Lindbergh Business Corp pavement by itself was about two hundred thousand. The cul-de-sac was a hundred and ninety thousand. So there's the other hundred thousand, so that's why they have the three hundred thousand dollar bill. Typically, it's not that high. Wagner does not accomplish as much, but we were pretty, pretty grateful with the weather and we were able to get it done. And so now we're just looking at crack sealing, we're looking at backfilling, and also seed straw and cleaning out the, the project area and the curvilllets. And then we'll do a final inspection. We have still to get billed by Wagner for this month, about twenty-seven thousand three hundred to complete the billing for the street projects. And then the retainage, five percent, which we hold at the end of the year, which is around twenty-three thousand now, but it's going to get a little higher once they finish out the billing for the project. And that is standard five percent retainage until the project is a hundred percent complete. Sometimes we do that the following year when they establish vegetation. The contractors typically ask us to reduce that amount based on what's left. So if they crack seal, they clean up the project, they do the, clean out the curvilllets, then we can say, okay, there, we only have seed straw and vegetation. So maybe we can just reduce that five percent retainage down to five thousand or whatever it is to complete the project. And then to remind everybody, budgeted for this street project was only three hundred thousand. This street project, we talked about trying to get to a good stopping point because we have another two point five million to get out of there. So we increased the project amount by two hundred thousand, so it's, it was five hundred thousand for this year. The budget was never revised to show that amount. So Teresa's working right now at City Hall trying to go through the accounts to see if we can pick up the extra two hundred thousand, not much to cover. If not, then we may have to come back to the board and do some type of adjustment. To continue with this project phasing, if you want to stay at Green Park Indus, Green Park Commerce Center, we're looking at five hundred thousand a year to, for five years to get out. We still have Lind Ferry, which hopefully we can get federal grant money if we maybe contact Hornet Sherford. They've done all the other ones for us. And that may be like a million dollar project. So federal grants would be great if they, we get eighty percent cover on that. We have to redesign all the stormwater drainage. We have to do all the ADA standards for the sidewalks and completely redo that, go through MSD also for approval. So for next year, if you want to continue, five hundred thousand would be a great budget amount. There's going to be overruns. The SCI billing is not part of that five hundred thousand, so we're between ten and twenty thousand dollars there. If I run into problems during construction or some big problems, I can have thirty to fifty thousand dollars extra that I may have to add to the project. So if, if I can ask for more amounts on the budget, that would be great. That way we are, we will stay under budget rather than yearly typically go over budget once we're all said and done with the street project.
Are, are we going to get Marley in there sometime next year?
I've got my list right now. Do you want to do Marley full replacement or did you want to do some maintenance on it?
Well, we were talking about that before in doing the, if, if it's, if it's not worth it to do the patch again, it'd be, you know, that, that street is in really poor condition.
So what, what has happened? And what, it's, it's, it's our fault for not having a crack sealing program. Typically, all of your problems come at the joints. And without a crack sealing program, then you jeopardize the joint sometimes if you don't watch it. And that's where your deterioration typically starts. We had that at Cedar Berry before we did full slab replacement Cedar Berry. And we had to do a bunch of asphalt patching. And you kind of hump over the area of the, of the joints that has deteriorated. And it's due to age, it's due to, you know, weathering, which is freeze and thaw. And over the years, you, they start to fall apart. That's where you'll see it. Or you'll see it at the box outs for your manholes. So in the old subdivisions, all your manholes for sanitary service are down the building of the pavement. The new subdivisions, you want utilities out. You don't want any utilities under the pavement. Now, you're, of course, your, your service lines are going to be under the pavement. So for the older subdivisions, you've got, we create box outs. So around the manhole, you will get some type of deterioration and cracking. So you want that pavement to be separate from the slabs so you don't have to replace four slabs every time you get some cracking around the manholes.
What, what are you, what are you suggesting for Marley?
Let, let me run, drive through that with Teresa because we were talking about looking at all of the deterioration that the Aldermen have pointed out to us. And that we can determine if, if whatever's deteriorating, if there's enough hole or deterioration where we can put asphalt in. Because sometimes you, or any kind of joint sealant, epoxy, you have to have enough area where you can put it in and it will stick. Otherwise, if you just do hardly any, it's going to pop out. It's not going to last. And then sometimes you're just throwing money back into an area and you allow it to deteriorate more just because you don't want to keep throwing money into it. But right now, if the Aldermen want to start thinking about it, we are five more years to get out of Green Park Commerce. If you want to wait five more years to do full slab replacement in these subdivisions, which will be thirty years old by, by then. Or you could go back now and start do full slab replacement now for areas that are deteriorated to the point where you think it's, it's ready. And then leave Green Park Commerce. There's no reason to stay in Green Park Commerce outside of our original street study was to get everything done in the city once. Complete all the street replacements before we restart the program again.
I'm, I would, I would like to see, you know, it seems like the property owners kind of take it on the chin most of the time. So I would, I would like to see, especially with, with Marley, that's a street that I'm familiar with. That's, you know, that, that's in need of either a lot of repair or replacement. And if we could work that in with doing the Commerce Center, whoever.
With the, with the streets that we've done in the city, we've spent more money in the subgrade and it's paid off. Because now we're just looking at possibly doing the pavement and not doing any subgrade remediation. And so I think we can give more distance in our pavement now that we're not going to go below the because we went from a six-inch slab on top of fat clay, which we went, we changed that to a seven-inch of pavement, torches of rock, and filter fabric. And so that's where our majority of our investment went into that and it's paid off. So now if we're just doing the pavement, we're going to go along the distance that, that those funds are going to give us more distance for the, for the pavement and get more pavement done.
So we need to establish also a maintenance type program you talked about?
Well, crack sealing.
Crack sealing.
Yeah. That's kind of put, been put on the back burner because we wanted to get all the streets done. We did. But crack sealing program would save at least the joints and deterioration at the joints. But we've never had a crack sealing program for, for the city.
So that, right now, the crack sealing is kind of after the fact.
If we start going the streets again in the city, I would definitely talk about crack sealing.
We can incorporate that, yeah.
Because that will give you more life. And what that entails is you, they go in and put more crack sealing in or they take on the old and put in the new. And now you got to look at the, the funding, how much money do you want to spend for the life of your pavement. But again, we can just go back in and just keep throwing more crack sealing on top of the old. And that, the crack sealing is to prevent water from getting in the cracks and then freezing because when, when water freezes, it expands and it cracks the pavement. And that's where you're getting all majority of your, of your problems. So if, I'm here to discuss if you have any questions about Wagner billing, SCI billing, the overtime, the mileage. I can discuss all that if you'd like to talk now or if you want to just continue discussions at a later date. And also please bring up which streets you want to do next year. And what budget you want to give me for next year.
Thanks, Derek. City clerk, Teresa, have anything to report?
No, I'm good.
Three point five, the treasurer report, who we have, Anna?
Anna, you're, you're on.
Yeah.
Hi, Anna.
Hi, I apologize. I lost you. Actually, I'm, I'm here to decide to update on you right away, so. Are you guys sure you're okay?
Um, sound like.
Okay, I apologize. And I know Teresa, we're hoping to maybe get some IT set up in that room to make this a little better for everybody.
Correct.
But I will talk as loud as I can. I promise I'm not yelling at you, so. I think the court has the reports I just over, right, Teresa?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So I did try to make these a little bit easier to read. So please, if there's any feedback on that, let me know. But I tried to make sure they were a little easier. So the, the first report is going to be your balance sheet. So this is going to show your balances both at the end of September thirtieth for twenty twenty-four and for twenty twenty-five so that you can see the changes. Just a cool thing to point out here is the verified balances that are presented at twenty twenty-five are still as of June thirtieth. Those quarterly payments do last a little bit, so. And I received those, yes, and we'll update them once they are received. In total, your cash is up about thirty percent year over year. But your investments have increased about twenty-nine percent. So some of those CDs that matured are getting in your cash account. So that's the main reason for that change. So total year over year, it's, it's pretty steady, it's increased about four percent total. So not a huge change from, from each year. The rest of the balance sheet, not much to point out, most of this is adjusted at year end as part of the audit process. So I, I think Mike is there, first thing is to present the audit today. So most of these other numbers are presented as part of the audit and then people will work on adjusting those as part of next year's, or at least this fall thirty-one twenty-five audit process. Any questions over the balance sheet before I move on to the budget and actual schedule?
All right.
So the next page that you see should be your budget and actual schedule. So this is for the nine months since September thirtieth. So your first column is going to be your actual revenues and expenses. And then you'll see your budget, you'll see a fluctuation of over or under budget and then a percent of where you're at in your budget. So if you think about it, you know, being about, being at September thirtieth for these financials, you're about seventy-five percent of your way through the year. So that's kind of right where you'd expect to be as far as your budget goes. Obviously, some of those items fluctuate with timing, right? But just a good kind of base point to be at. So overall, the first one is going to be your general fund revenues. You can see that by each type of revenue, between your road and risk tax, your tax, your intergovernmental taxes, et cetera. But if you go all the way down to the bottom, to that first blue line, you know, you'll see that you're right at seventy-six percent of your budgeted revenues in your general fund. So I think that that's exactly where you want to be at, at this point in the year. And you're at a hundred and two percent of the revenue as of the same time last year. So I think your, your budget's pretty good for your revenue side of things and hopefully it will continue to track as you finish out your year. If you keep moving on, obviously, the expenditures for the next item thing. So you can also see these by group or individual line item. So you'll see your personnel costs are right at sixty-nine percent. So obviously, you budget for those based on, you know, the complete makeup. But you're doing pretty good at sixty-nine percent, a little bit under budget since this point through the year. So pretty good there. Under your administration, and what I did to point out, which I do believe we discussed last meeting, was the outside labor costs are, are quite a bit over budget and now with those petty group invoices. So Teresa, I don't know if you're expecting any more of those or not. Okay. So what we'll do is at year end, we will do recommend a budget amendment for the board, more than likely just to reallocate some of the budget so that you are individually, you know, staying within budget for each of your funds. So we could discuss that as we get closer to year end, but that, that's the reason for that over into the account. Keep scrolling down as far as your operating services, you're at about fifteen percent of your budget. So overall, looking good there as well. And then if you go down to your public works, you are a little bit over budget. Again, I think last meeting, we discussed some of the timing of the snow removal cost and a few other of those snowing invoices that were for twenty-four, twenty twenty-four that were paid in twenty twenty-five. So ideally, you know, maybe a light year of snow in twenty twenty-six and you won't have that same, that same rate key. So overall, those are the main reasons that you're hitting a little bit over budget for your public works. But, but if you get down to your total expenditures line for your general fund, you're at eighty-three percent of your budget. So just slightly over budget as far as where you're at the year, but nothing too, too crazy. And then as far as your net budgeted revenues, you're at fifty percent of the, the revenues over expenditures for what you budgeted. So ideally, if the expenses don't go up too far in this last quarter and your revenues continue to come in, you'll see that even out a little bit. The next item for your super lateral funds, I know that the expenses are over budget and I know Teresa, through the audit process, there was a change in how those invoices are paid. So that should be a one-time, a larger payment, right, Teresa?
I'm open.
Yes. So, and honestly, for audit purposes, I believe the audit team did accrue that back to be twenty twenty-four. So when you go to adjust for the audit, you'll actually see that adjusted out since it was accrued back last year. So on a cash basis, you're over budget, but we can get those filed adjustments for when you get those final adjustments for the audit, that should keep it out a little bit.
Oh, that sounds great.
Yep. And then finally, the capital improvement fund. I I know, Teresa, I think you did mention that there is a budget amendment on the table for tonight. Is that correct?
Uh, no, it's not on for tonight. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, the $200,000 over in the industrial park budget.
Yeah. And I know that the budget for the capital expenditures looks a little odd here. I think like this street lining line item holds some of the budget that is actually for a few of the other online items. So Teresa, maybe for next meeting, we'll work and make sure that we have that allocated out where it should be. And then I know there were some additional expenditures that were going to be going through here October. So we'll make sure that that's played out so that the board can see where it's at closer to year end and when that's really allocated over. But overall, for your for your capital fund, you're at 55% of your budget through the end of September. So you do have a little bit of a loss there as far as, you know, the revenues and the expenditures. But I know that you guys obviously have some capital improvement plans. So I think that was budgeted for. And then finally, at the bottom here, you're just going to see a summary of each fund and where you're sitting. And then overall, for all of your funds. So, you know, in total, you brought in just over $2.332 billion, $30,000 in revenues and you have $1,820,000 in expenses. So at the end of September, you have about $209,000 in net revenue. So you're sitting at 88% of the net revenue that you did budget for the year. So overall, I think you're you're doing good with your budget. I think there will be some amendments to be made by the end of the year to make sure you end the year in compliance with the budget. I do think Mike might have a comment on that as far as maybe how it's gone for prior audits. But the goal will be to have you guys line up your budget with your actual that year end. I know it's a lot of information. Obviously, the board, you're welcome to reach out to me at any time to discuss those. I did also give you a schedule of your current year actual versus your prior year actuals, but I won't dive into more into that. If you do see anything that you have any questions on, please feel free to reach out to me, Teresa.
Anybody have any questions for Anna at this time? Sorry. Anna, thank you. We appreciate you.
Thanks, Anna.
Thank you. I'm welcome. Thank you, Teresa.
That was great.
Thanks. Bye.
Three point six, county police report. Jeremy, please present the September police report.
For the month of September, we had 403 calls for service, of which 146 calls were erected. That manufactured 31 police reports and less than half of those were criminal reports. We had 14 criminal reports of the 31. 10 of those 14 were thefts, kind of spread out throughout the city. At the beginning of September, we went through a air conditioning, businesses were getting hit with air conditioning thefts. We believe we've identified a suspect. He does not live in the city. He does not live in this precinct, but we're still investigating that. He he hit the precinct for probably 10 to 12 air conditioning thefts. So we think we've caught up to him. We had three from Walgreens. We had a couple of random license plates taken, one off of Yuma, one off of Green Park Road. So the thefts were spread out throughout the city in September. We had a we had a fight between employees at Dairy Queen. We had a couple accidents that we handled. Other than that, that's that's all to that.
Any questions for Jeremy? Thanks, Jeremy. Unfinished business, we have none. And under new business, we have bill number 923, an ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, approving a limited development plan submitted by the Medbar LLC for 5706 South Lindbergh Boulevard and directing the same to be recorded with St. Louis County reporter of deed. Eric, do you want to touch on any of that as far as?
Right. PNC approved the limited development plan. What was discussed was building permit application, ultimately, signed permit application. And we also discussed some of the improvements that they've done to the parking lot, resurfacing or ceiling, and also I believe the building was was painted. So the rest of the improvements were interior. We talked about trash. The trash is going to be possibly inside and just wheeled out in a regular container. But if they eat a dumpster, then we wouldn't ask them to come back and discuss trash enclosure. And that's about it.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Anyone? Okay. I will entertain a motion for the first reading of the bill number 923.
So moved.
Michael?
Second.
Second.
Carol? All in favor of the first reading of bill number 923, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Paul, please read bill number 923 for the first time.
Bill number 923, an ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, approving a limited development plan submitted by the Medbar LLC for 5706 South Lindbergh Boulevard and directing it to be recorded with St. Louis County reporter of deed.
I will entertain a motion for the second reading of bill number 923. Anyone? Tammy? Second?
Second.
Marty? All in favor of the second reading of bill number 923, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Paul, please read bill number 923 for the second time.
Bill number 923, an ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, approving a limited development plan submitted by the Medbar LLC for 5706 South Lindbergh Boulevard and directing it to be recorded with the St. Louis County reporter of deed.
I will entertain a motion for the final passage of bill number 923.
So moved.
Carol, second?
Second.
Tammy? Any discussion? Hearing none. Teresa, please do the roll call vote.
Alderman Moncany.
Aye.
Alderman Finn.
Aye.
Alderman Broden.
Aye.
Alderman Hamilton.
Aye.
Alderman Slattery.
Aye.
Alderman Whitsey.
Aye.
Bill number 923 becomes ordinance 883. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay if you like, but it may be a long meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Did you know the next step?
Roor.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yeah.
You kind of went through most of all of it. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Five point two, bill number 924, an ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, amending chapter 120 pertaining to access to public meetings and records. Paul, can you explain that for us?
Right. So the state legislature last session made some changes to the sunshine. Well, you're ordered to incorporate a lot of those straight out of the state law. So we went ahead and made the updates to comply with that. And then while we were at it, since you had off to as a policy, but not in your code book, the use of video conferencing technology that kind of came about during COVID and all that, I went ahead and added that as section 120, 120, so that it's now actually in the book, too, when people, if you ever need to find it. And so as opposed to being on a policy somewhere in the city hall where nobody can find it. So that's what we did. We're just updating it to comply with state law, especially having to do with now cities can request clarification that people are supposed to respond. And same with fees. If people don't pay their fees within 150 days or 90 days, then the city can treat the the request as being withdrawn because they didn't pay their fees. So that's the big update there.
Any questions, discussions? Michael? On page three, section 120.060, is this is this providing a degree of protection of privacy for people who are calling in their property maintenance complaints?
Well, to to the extent that they give some PII, it would, meaning, you know, they're personally identifiable information. If somebody calls in one anonymous, then we wouldn't have any of that. If somebody gave a phone number or a call back or something like that, that would we would probably protect those. And yeah, we're certainly trying to make sure that the public who has some expectation of privacy that they're not, that people can't then get information that they're trying to keep private.
Thanks, Michael. Anyone else? I will entertain a motion for the first reading of Act 24.
So moved.
Carol, second?
Second.
Tammy? All in favor of the first reading of bill number 924, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Paul, please read bill number 924 for the first time.
Bill number 924, an ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, amending chapter 120 pertaining to access to public meetings and records.
I will entertain a motion for the second reading of bill number 924.
So moved.
Tammy and Michael, seconds. All in favor of the second reading of bill number 924, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Paul, please read bill number 924 for the second time.
Bill number 924, an ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, amending chapter 120 pertaining to access to public meetings and records.
I will entertain a motion for the final passage of bill number 924.
So moved.
Michael, second?
Second.
Carol, any discussion? Hearing none. Teresa, please do the roll call vote.
Alderman Finn.
Aye.
Alderman Broden.
Aye.
Alderman Hamilton.
Aye.
Alderman Slattery.
Aye.
Alderman Whitsey.
Aye.
And Alderman Moncany.
Aye. Bill number 924 becomes ordinance 884. Five point three, bill number 925, an ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, establishing rental property registration requirement for the city of Green Park, Missouri, to aid in COVID enforcement and public safety relating matters thereto. Teresa, can you explain that?
As everyone knows, you know, we are on the iWork program now. The iWork program is a wonderful tool and the it's showing, you know, going on it for a few months, but it's already showing me that the problem properties are the repeat properties. One thing I'm noticing is if we have people or businesses who own property here, but they don't live here or work here, they're harder to get a hold of and harder to get their properties into compliance. I believe that if we make it a requirement, that all they have to do is register with the city. We don't have to charge them anything. We just need to know who do we contact? Because if you live in California and then you move three times, we're going to get all these notices back. You know, do you have a local agent? Do you have someone who's supposed to maintain the property while, you know, you live in a different state? I'm just asking for a little bit more, not really enforcement, but a little bit more of a tool for the city to say, hey, you know, yes, legally, you're the property owner, you got a notice. But so did your agent, who is supposed to be taking care of this property, because maybe they're not. If your boss is in a different state, do you know what I mean? Maybe you're a little bit lax sometimes.
Absentee owners, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I I that's where I'm at with this.
Now, when there's people in the home, like the ones that were reported.
Yes.
On the A-streets. We know that that person does not live there. And they show, they don't show those people on that occupancy. Can we send a letter to them, letting them know that we need to know that you don't live there, that you actually have tenants in there? Because that has not gone to you yet. You know what I'm talking about.
Okay, yes.
So did you send a letter to them? It's been like a month and a half, two months. Have they gotten a letter? Or how do you let them know, we know you don't live there, we know you're renting, there's at least three people in this house, who are they? How do we go about doing that?
Right now, a letter is sent to the owner record, which is through St. Louis County. And then we, if we don't know who's in there, we just address another copy of the letter and it reads tenant.
So do we have, we can enforce them coming in to let us know who is living there?
The enforcement is, they get two warnings and then they're sent over to the prosecutor's office.
Very good. Thank you.
This will not just be for rental properties or residential. The registration will also be for commercial properties.
Well, this one doesn't do that. If you want to do that, we got to survive it. Because the one, this one is registry of residential rental property.
Oh, okay. Just residential? Okay. I I would be like it for commercial, too, because we have commercial property owners that don't live within the state of Missouri. And sometimes these properties fall into a little bit of a disinter.
Lynn Barry in Lindbergh, yeah. What'd that look like? Yeah. So should we table this thing and get it readjusted or whatever?
If you want to expand it to that, then we need to.
I think so. I think so.
I have a question. When you apply for an occupancy permit, you have to put to people that are going to live there. So is what's happening that those people are moving out and your people are moving in and not letting us know? How do they not know who lives there?
Um.
They don't tell us.
They don't tell us?
But it's on the occupancy permit.
Do you know how many are sneaking in?
That's what I'm wondering.
They're not truthful.
That's what I'm asking.
Absolutely. That's our problem, yeah.
Yes.
More people are living there. And it was called in to me. It's kind of on the fringe of your your ward and my ward. It's like, hey, there's five cars out here.
Yeah.
You know, and it shows that two little women live there. They don't. And they have other rental properties.
And it's not just that one, you know, there there's the other one that we talked about. Yeah.
Well, I know, and this is in Crestwood, but there's at least three homes where someone moves in, then their rent is, you know, they decide to move out and the landlord allows somebody else to come in, but he never does another occupancy permit.
Do we still get the utility change notice?
To my knowledge, it always changed.
I thought they changed it back, though, did they not?
My understanding was that Amber started doing it again.
That's what I thought, too. We need to get on that. That's the only way unless you have very observant neighbors. And even then, you know.
But the landlord keeps your utilities in his name. You're not you're not doing anything that way anyway.
But they don't usually do that because the landlord to pay them, you know?
Well, they charge them to their tenants, but that's how they've been circumventing on occasions. We had discussed that, absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, I see it in real estate all the time. They're not stupid.
I see what you're saying, Michael.
They're not stupid.
I haven't heard of other, going back to that practice.
I thought they did. I thought they did.
I know in fact they do because they do it for myself. I have rental with Prosecutor and my son in South County. And he gets a bill and I do it also. You just tell him, you have to call in. So the the person renting calls and gets everything in their name.
Yes.
But then the landlord, oh, the word of the town, yeah, nevermind. The landlord can get another copy. I don't know about this city. Okay, nevermind.
So we're going to table 5.3. We're going to go to 5.4, resolution number 405, approving a statement of work audit services for the city's financial or fiscal year 2025. Mike?
I see it on the agenda and a copy of it here. It's, we had an agreement with the city. It's, I believe, the last year of a five-year agreement that we started previously, so. But it's a standard wording, similar to last year, and it's for the fiscal year 2025. And the fee is on the last page of the fee agreement, which was similar to what we had last year, with a sum increase per the agreement five years ago.
Any discussion?
So you said this is the last year of the five-year?
I believe so. I would have to double check that, but I, 2025 would be, so the 2025 audit that we knew in 2026 would be the, I believe, the last year. Then we would get back to you after that, whether you want to have another five-year agreement or year by year. Now, these are year by year anyways, just like a proposal that we had for the, for the.
We're actually having it here in October, so that we can get on to the audit early in 2026, so we can be done by June.
Anybody else have a question? All right. I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution four oh five.
So moved.
Michael, second?
Second.
Carol? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
There's a backhanded compliment in there somewhere.
He added easier than he added it. All right, five point five, resolution number four oh six, approving an appointment to the board adjustment for the city of Green Park. We have Jerry here. Is it Bane?
Yes.
Okay. And Jerry, appreciate you stepping up and getting on the board adjustments. We need all the help we can. We're still looking for an alternate, so. At least one more position. So I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number four oh six.
So moved.
Carol, I hear a second? Tammy? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you for stepping up.
You're welcome.
Five point six. Resolution number four oh seven, resolution of the city of Green Park authorizing destruction of certain city records in accordance with the state law requirements. Teresa, can you explain that?
Well, it's been a number of years since you guys took that destruction of records. The last resolution that I could find is thirteen years ago. I was kind of nervous sitting at the top, like, I honestly couldn't find another resolution. So I was hoping it was it, turns out it was. So you guys have a lot of records that are no longer necessary. They've been through the audit process, you know. These are just invoices from thirteen years ago, different type items. You have a complete list of what I would like to destroy. I also included the retention records from the secretary of state's office. I tried to include each page number. You can find where we have permission to destroy that record after a certain amount of time. And I tried to make it as easy as possible for you guys. I'm going to work with American Eagle. There we go. I was stuck for that for a minute, didn't it? And we'll see about having, like, him come in and do some shredding. We do have a shredder, but it's hardly even bigger than what you would use in your home. You know, it takes forever, or it might be worth paying a few extra dollars to have them do it far enough. I'd like to continue this. This is something that Lisa and I have been working on, and then we were able to really work hard once Kelsey came back. We hope not to fall behind. We know how the Kelsey is going, but we would like to continue. We don't need these records, they're just sitting up, taking up space in that closet downstairs.
I can hear you, from your new hiring.
American Eagle waits to see if they'll come in and do some shredding of those documents.
Meaning they, did they have a big destruction shredder?
I'm going to work with them to see if they do, yes.
So they have those copies, too? Yeah. They just pull it right up?
Exactly. They wheelbarrow it out, throw it in, and then the city witnesses.
Get rid of junk.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good?
All right. I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution four oh seven.
So moved.
Carol, second?
Second.
Michael? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So five point seven is the presenting page in fiscal year 2024 audit report. Mike, you're up.
All right, thank you very much. We've issued two reports like this. Again, my name is Michael Williams. I'm a principal at Sickich, and we, I'm the principal in charge of the city's audit. And I wanted to go over those two reports. So they look like this. There's two reports. One of them says financial statements on it, and the other one says auditor's communication. So the communication is comments and recommendations that we have, other items. But that comes out of the audit, so usually I like to go over the first thing is the main audit report. So it says the financial statements. That's, and I'll just flip through it, it won't take too long, just page by page. But after the table of contents, the first thing is the Sickich independent auditor's report. It's on our letterhead. And I try to talk about things that I think are important or different. And the two, first two paragraphs, I think they're an important part here. The first paragraph says we've audited the accompanying financial statements for 2024. The second paragraph is important, because that's the opinion of the auditors. And it says, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. So there's, there's no modifications, qualifications to our opinion on the financial statements, that they're presented in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting for December thirty one, 2024. And that's similar to what you've had before, but that's, that's good. The next few pages have other information just related to what an audit is and other parts of the report. But past that, then, the basic financial statements, the first one is called on page four, the statement of net position. So the statement of net position is like a balance sheet. Oh, does everybody have a copy? I saw some copies out here. So page four is a balance sheet which has the balances of the cash and payables of all the funds blended together. So this is the cash investments, but it's also the fixed assets, which are the things like land and easements, construction and other assets the city has. Liabilities are things that the city owes. And then the difference in between your assets and your liabilities on this page is called, it's called net position. So this is supposed to be the way that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, calculates the net financial position of governments. So at the bottom of the page, we see the total net position, financial net position of around nineteen million eight hundred and thirty thousand. However, a lot of that net position is investment in capital assets. It's fifteen point six million. There's also some restricted for sewer laterals, some restricted for capital, but the unrestricted amount is at four million dollars. And there's more detail further back, so. I was going to talk on that page. The next page, page five, again, is a summary of all the funds blended together, the expenditures by function are at the top left side of the page, administration, engineering, police, et cetera. And then there's revenues that are related to those expenses. Those are the columns next to the expenses. And then the middle section, the general revenues, that's the general revenues that support the net cost of those different functions of the city. And then that totals the net position at the bottom of the page. And you can see it reconciles to the bottom of the page, which is the nineteen million that was on the previous page. But let's see, one, two, three, four, the fifth number from the bottom, it says change in net position. So that's the increase in net position for the year of about four hundred and eighty-four thousand. Anyway, I guess the, the point is that the net position improved from prior year. Just big picture. Okay, then the next page then is the balance sheet for the, the funds. Now, what I heard Anna go over tonight was your total cash and investments. Now, what this, this is a little bit different, because this is cash and investments broken out by the different funds. So I like to talk about the general fund particularly, since it's the main operating fund of the city. So the general fund has assets of cash investments of around four million thirty-eight thousand. You can see the other funds on the page, there's some liabilities. And then again, on this page, the difference between the assets and liabilities is called fund balance, because there's no fixed assets, included no capital assets. And we see the general fund, fund balance total is around that four million thirty-two thousand, near the bottom of the page. A part of that is that committed for contingencies, that the city has a policy on that. So the unassigned fund balance for the general fund at December thirty one is three point five million. And so that's the balance sheet. A couple pages after that, then, page seven is a reconciling page. Page eight is a summary of the revenues and expenses. So again, it's a cash basis, it says revenues collected and expenditures paid. But just to look at the general fund, and there's more details on all the revenues and expenditures in the back, but total revenues collected around two million one twenty-one, expenditures paid around two million two fifty-two. So more expenses than revenues of a hundred and thirty-one thousand for the year. So reduced the general fund fund balance from that four million one sixty-three to four million thirty-two thousand. So that's the general fund. You can see the activity for the other funds, the capital and the sewer lateral. Capital projects had an increase at, at one, two, three, four, fifth line from the bottom shows a loss for the general fund, an increase for the capital project fund, and a, some loss for the sewer lateral fund. I thought it was interesting, overall, the, the net change in fund balance was a hundred and four dollars, so amazingly break even for the year. Anyway, page nine is another reconciling page. Page ten gets into the notes to the statements, and note one is summary of significant accounting policies. And so I, I usually don't talk about this a whole lot, since it's, policies don't change much from year to year. I did note it on the bottom of page eleven, that there is property tax disclosure. This says no property taxes for the year, but that'll change the next year. Page thirteen begins the first detailed note, note two, cash and investments. And note two A is deposits. So the deposits to us are cash deposits, like bank deposits. They're not like money that you put into, they're not just those kind of deposits. So anyway, but because there's a, there's a requirement in Missouri that your cash in the bank has to be secured by FDIC or other pledged collateral. And we've got a note on this in the back, so I thought I'd mention it here. The last sentence of note two A says, as of December thirty one, fourteen thousand five oh four, the city's bank balances were not secured or collateralized. So that's not a real significant number, but I think one of the banks had a little bit more than two hundred and fifty thousand, and then at the end of the year by fourteen thousand, so. Small amount there, but it's a disclosure, it's a requirement, so we've got management letter coming out later. The top of page fourteen then is the investments the city has. We can see there's CDs, treasuries, money market accounts, so nothing too exciting there. It also has the maturities of those, those different investments and the credit risk rating. Like I said, I don't think that's too exciting. Page sixteen, then, we get into the capital assets. So capital assets are big picture, long-term cost things, like land and construction, infrastructure this city has. Infrastructure is the biggest number on here, because once you buy an asset, like a building or place a new bridge or catwalk in service, it begins to depreciate. So the top part of the schedule is the cost of those items, the accumulated depreciation section, that's depreciation. So those items start depreciating year after year. And so what you do is you look at the cost of the asset minus the liability and see the net number. That's that bottom schedule, says capital assets net. And it says, we started off the year with fifteen million one fifty-seven, got some increases and decreases, and bottom line shows an increase for the year to fifteen million six forty-one. So. Increase in capital assets for the year. Okay, what's the next? Page seventeen, lessor agreements, since the city has leases. We disclose those for the upcoming years. Commitments and contingencies are the contracts for the lease and solid waste pickup. Six, risk management, that's insurance disclosure. And page eighteen, we get into the retirement plan disclosure. And number eight is a correction adjustment for the prior year that we noted of around thirty thousand, so. So that's the financial statements and the notes to the financial statements. And after that, we get into supplemental information. So the next couple of pages, pages nineteen and twenty have the original 2024 budget, more detail on the revenues, expenses. Has the original budget, the actual revenues, expenses, the difference between the actual revenues, expenses in the third column. So just looking at it overall, the total revenues collected, about two-thirds of the way down, page nineteen, shows that over budget on revenues of about three hundred and fifty-four thousand, with a variety of things. And expenditures on the next page, second line from the bottom, shows that there's about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand over budget on expenditures. And then we can see the, the net change in fund balance, what was originally budgeted, the final amount for the year, and then the net change. That's the detailed budget to actual. And the next page, then, page twenty-one, is capital project fund, this has the restricted taxes for the capital project, capital project sales tax, and expenditures against that. And some notes on page twenty-two related to the budget. So that is the end of the main financial audit report. And I'll jump into the second report. So this is the auditor's communication to the board. There's a cover letter, a one-page cover letter. Then kind of a boilerplate, three-page letter on, it says other things, qualitative aspects on accounting. But also, if there's any, at the top of page three, if there's any adjustments that were required to be made, we have to report those to the board, which we have some of those a couple pages back. And so, and the information about the other parts of the audit. So on page five, then, we disclose the adjustments that we came up with. There was some, there was one adjustment last year, I believe there's three this year, and two of those, those number two and number three, had to do with the, with the sewer lateral adjustments to the schedules that we got from St. Louis County. And then, the management letter begins on page six. So if auditors find anything like a material weakness, significant deficiency, or other comments for management, we have a management letter for those. So one of the two paragraphs, I believe the third, fourth one, says that we do have some significant deficiencies, and we also have some other items to report to the board. So, page eight, then, begins the comments and recommendations that we have. I believe there's eleven of them in total. There's four significant deficiencies. Since it's several pages long, I won't read all of these, but I'll just summarize them and be happy to take any questions on them after that. The significant deficiency, number one, had to do with review and approval of the bank reconciliations. Number two has to do with documentation of policies and procedures. Oh, and number one and number two, I was going to point out to you, that those are repeats from the prior year. So they say is noted in the prior year. So you know which ones are repeated. Number three is a new comment that, that we noted that there were certain checks that weren't being deposited in a timely manner, so we just recommend that all monies be accounted for, adopt a policy otherwise to hold checks. Number four has a comment related to the budget expenditures, that there were certain expenditures that were over budget. So we recommend use of budget amendments or other monitoring, so that there's not a, either a budget deficit or amounts over budget. So those are the four significant deficiencies. After that, then, we have other comments that we're also bringing management's attention. Number five has, and this is a repeat for prior year, about the. Number five has, and this is a repeat for prior year, about the, city has a capital asset policies and so we recommend that you follow those policies closer. Uh, number six has to do with, um, that allowing a business to occupy a certain space in the city's business, uh, in the building before lease was signed. Uh, number seven had to do with time sheets that were, uh, may have been completed, uh, not been completed accurately, so we recommend that you have, uh, communications and better documentations related to those. Number eight has to do with the investment program and the city has an investment policy. Uh, and so we just considered, think that you maybe could consider that related to the, uh, the documentation that the board gets for, uh, its review and approval of its investments. Number nine has to do with, uh, credit cards and the use of those for purchase of, came up regarding food and purchases, uh, food and drink purchases. So we recommend you review and update that, consider any changes necessary. Number ten on page eleven, uh, has to do with older checks, if you have, uh, outstanding checks on your bank reconciliation, uh, that you either review those, uh, get those resolved by sending them to the places that are not cashing them or else remit those to unclaimed property with the state. And number eleven had to do with that bank deposit, uh, that was not fully secured or collateralized that I mentioned. So, uh, after that then, there are future accounting pronouncements that, uh, we describe in here and, uh, those are our eleven comments and the report, uh, on the audit and the comments and recommendations. Be happy to take any other thoughts or questions or comments on that.
Any questions for Mike? Anyone?
You've already started putting some of those policies in place.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Next year, you're, you can take some of those notes off.
All right, well, yeah, we had, we did have four comments the previous year, we have eleven comments this year, so, yeah, it'd be, it'd be nice to have, uh.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Five point eight, discussion of annual occupancy inspections for rental property, three seven.
Okay. So, as I said, the I work program is starting to show the repeat offenders and frequent flyers of the, um, some of the, the properties are not being inspected or, um, going such a long period of time that the deficiencies within the residents really need to be addressed. Um, I'm recommending it, looking into, I, I, I know of several cities that are doing this where they are requiring annual inspections for rental properties. So this will not be required.
Residential.
Yes, correct, residential. It will not be required for owner occupied properties. It would only be required for rental properties and that's just to keep them up to code. It's for safety. I mean, that's basically what the, the occupancy inspection is, is safety inspection. As I said, I, I, I've spoken with several city clerks, um, where several cities are going to this with rental properties, we're not the only ones seeing the increase of rental properties in their, in their cities. They're, they're happening all over where rental property are, are being, well, property's being bought up and being turned into rental properties.
So is that at the expense of the landlord?
Yeah, it would be at the expense of the landlord.
How do we make sure, do we, how do we make sure that's happening? Do we have a database that says that it's time to get the occupancy done?
Uh, I, I would, I would, could generate it, yes.
Yeah, and then a letter goes out to the landlord saying, you need to get this done and you give the specific amount of time?
Yeah.
Forty days or something?
Right, like thirty days to get it done.
And then what happens if they don't do it?
Uh, they'll receive a violation notice and then if they don't respond, they'll get a second violation notice and then if still no response, we'll send them to the prosecutor.
I like it.
Is there any monetarily, is there any fines that can be levied before it goes to the prosecutor?
No.
Okay.
Cause the court's the only one that can do it fine.
Okay, and can you walk us through how this is going to work again? Like, who's doing the inspection?
St. Louis County.
Okay, and then we have to reach out to them?
Yes, we do anyway. They come into the city hall, they fill out the application, we take the fee, we send it to county, county contacts them to set up the inspection time.
But then they'll communicate with us that they're having a problem or?
Yes.
They're still at the nearest home or they can't get in?
That is correct.
And all this would be documented in the county and then they would document that forward to us? Like if there's any issues on their end, we wouldn't know this?
Yeah, like, um, I get a, um, uh, an inspection report for each property.
It's like a regular, a regular inspection, right?
You just have it annually for rental properties?
Okay. No, I was just making sure that whatever the county has, whatever documentation in terms of the inspection, do we have?
They send me their reports.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do we need to vote on that or how is that working?
Um, I, I.
It's just a discussion at this time.
Yeah, it's a discussion. Um, if it, if it's, you know, consensus?
Yeah, if you want to move it forward, I would say somebody to say so, we should move it forward. If you don't, then somebody should say that.
I'm for this a hundred percent.
That we move it forward?
Yeah, absolutely.
To our benefit of the city and the residents that live on the street of whatever problem.
They're, they're going to kick and scream, but it's, it's the best for us.
Well, it's to their benefit too because it's their, their property going downhill.
They don't, they don't think like that. They don't care. They don't have to look out a window and look at a garage or a cardboard that's got so much stuff built in it.
Right.
Stuff spewing out down the streets, you know, they're, they're up in another whole area and that's the problem with that. So, yeah, I'm for us going forward with this immediately.
It's in the zoning code, so we're going to have to go to PNC for, you know, have public hearings and then come back.
And so we got that set, that that's in motion, right?
A little motion in a second and then we can move on.
Okay. So I make a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we did make a motion.
I think it was revoked.
She's second, correct.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
All right. Five point nine, supplemental by St. Louis County Police Department, uh, police service cost sheet, I guess we all have copies of that. Any questions, discussions on that?
You know, I would still like to see, and I know nobody wants to do it, but we did have a brief moment in time and they traced it down to, it was Matt Kattler, did work out of necessity, he preferred weekends for whatever reason in his personal life, but when summertime comes, uh, we enjoy seeing our police officers coming up and down the streets on a Saturday, whatever, a Sunday. Um, I mean, I would love to see just one weekend a month that our officers could, uh, at least the daytime and patrol the weekends and, and meet the neighbors. It was very nice. It was way back in the day, I know y'all remember, and it was Lacy and, um, Matt Kattler and all those guys and everybody knew the police. Um, it was a more neighborhood type thing, just maybe even one weekend a month. I know you guys don't want to do it. We like you guys, we love you, we respect you, but that's just my opinion. I was, and I'm talking about in the summertime, in the wintertime it's not so much, but in summer, everybody's out mowing their grass and it was just really, really nice. Everybody knew their police officers, um, the police would go around, stop the car, greet them, just my two cents.
Anything else?
What are, what are, are we voting on something here?
No, it's automatic renewal, we just.
Reforming the board?
Yeah, you're just, you have, go ahead.
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, the contract is auto renews if, if they have the ability to go up to a cap of five percent. They have proposed a, uh, amount that is five percent even and, um, about seventy thousand more, um, annually for next year.
Most, uh, more or less just a let you know kind of thing, you know, let the board know?
I don't, I don't know why we're still, we're still approving the supplemental, uh, contract, uh, whatever supplemental patrol thing. That's seventy thousand dollars and, uh, and I don't, I don't know how, how we verify that we get the service out of that, for one.
That's a valid point.
Why can't I question you?
If you want to reform the contract, you'll have to negotiate with St. Louis County over that, we can't do that tonight, so.
Why don't we do this, put this on the table and head it to next month?
Very good.
Bobby's still going to have to know what you're negotiating, so.
Like a special meeting?
No, I'm just saying, it's like you can't just go, hey, we want to change something. We specifically need to say, here's what we want to do.
Okay, so we table till, uh, next meeting?
Yeah, unless you want us to, you want somebody to start having a discussion now, but yeah, it's not really on the agenda to discuss that, so let's bring it back next month.
The supplemental tran- the supplemental contracts controls just provides St. Louis County police officers, not, not the two of you, right?
The two hour, half an hours, it's like four increments, correct? With the total, the two hours?
Outside officers, correct.
That come in during odd hours when they're not here, such as, I believe it's now ten o'clock or eleven, and Sandra would go home. So it will be two, that's seven o'clock in the morning.
That's what I understood.
Right, it says on the sheet that there's a four thirty-minute contract controls, except for periods when a police officer is assigned to a tour duty. Total annual, uh, contract hours of control is forty-six thirty-two.
I'm not sure that that prevents anything from having the chance that someone.
Do we need a motion to move this on?
Yeah, move it on if you want, Dave.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's table for next year, for next year, for next month.
Yeah, next month.
No, I mean, you're not, there's nothing, I mean, you can't cancel the contract right now. If you want to reform it and have it amended or whatever, that's fine, we can have that discussion, but this has to, the fact that it's going up right now to, um, three hundred and seventy-one thousand thirty-four dollars and thirty cents is the case right now, but if you want to talk about the supplemental controls, um, then we can have, if it's eighty-one thousand, I guess, next year, um, then, you know, we can have somebody from St. Louis County Police come and answer questions, discuss it with them, whatever you want to do, at next meeting or something like that. Or you can not discuss it with them and just say, we don't want it and ask them to take it off the contract.
I'll take that option.
For twenty twenty?
Which, which option, Michael?
The, uh, strike it, the, strike the seventy thousand, strike the, uh, extra controls.
Eighty-one thousand next year.
Do we do that finally in full books?
Why do you want to do this?
I'm sorry?
Why do you want to do this? I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Well, I, this is, this is a nonsensical, uh, item on this. Uh, we don't, we don't know if these controls are being, are being performed, but we have no way of knowing that.
We really don't know that they're not being.
Yeah, I would, I would think that they are because, I mean, it's the police, they're, I'm sure it's there, but does it have any real significance? I mean, I have a lot of things that I think about and I understand, you know, the problem here is the police are short. You know, I come out of Hobby Lobby and, um, Jeremy, he had, there were young lady handcuffs sitting there and, um, you know, our police officer's over at Hobby Lobby, which I know you got to come out when they call you, but, you know, thinking, what if I go home and someone's in my backyard and breaking into my house and, you know, I, I guess that's just the way it's going to have to work. We just can't really work around that and you don't know when stuff's going to happen. But I thought about that when I was walking out of Hobby Lobby. I thought, wow, there's our police officer and what if something's going on in Green Park? He's here because they're short, so when I call, because I need someone, you know, he's here and they're already short, how do I know I'm going to get someone to help me?
Well, how do you really be there at that time?
Well, everything, you know, you just don't know when anything's going to happen and that's the thing, it's all up in the air, but I understand his point is, just this little drive-through thing, I guess, you know, I don't even know if there's a familiarity with the police that are coming through at those times, knowing our city, knowing our streets. Um, I mean, I don't know if it is effective and I think that's what you're alluding to, correct?
Well, let's, let's ask Jeremy, have you seen, uh, these supplemental controls? Have you seen them around?
Yeah, they have to document them on the, on their patrols. They're documented on the.
See, they're documented, you know?
Well, yeah, they would have to be documented.
So I want to go on board by saying I'm with Carol. I, I do not think that, I believe that the time that they say they're going to be there, they're going to be there. I don't, that's not an issue for me. I just don't see that those increments, something just might happen to occur during that time and the response time of nine-one-one is fast, so if someone needs something, they'll have St. Louis County Police Department being there at their aid. Um, I just, I don't think the money just.
Well, how about if, if we're, if we're going, if they're documenting this to the point that everybody, everybody's going to accept it without question, then why don't we document the time that our neighborhood policing officers are called out of the city and we get a rebate on that?
I don't know, I'm more focused on, I just don't think those.
Okay, you're, you're, okay, so you're, when, when Jeremy gets a call over to, uh, Highway, uh, two seventy and, and, uh, gravel, I, to assist with a traffic accident, uh, probably going to be there for, for several hours, okay? Um, we're, we're, in essence, we're paying his salary because we're paying his boss, the people he works for, right, to, to pay him. Okay, if you had a, you know, if you had a, um, a plumber over to the house and he said, well, I, you know, I'm going to be, uh, be the next two hours for going to get equipment because I didn't bring it along or I took something I need and I don't have it, uh, would you pay him for that two hours?
Actually, you'd have to pay. Excuse me for a minute.
Well, he was looking directly at me, wrong.
I'm, I'm looking at Tammy.
Okay, so let me answer, actually that, you do pay them, I got my air conditioner.
No, well, here, no, I'm, I'm saying, would you, would you pay them, knowing, would you, would you make that payment instead of, you know, two hours that I've actually worked? I'm charging you for four and you'd pay that?
Yes, I had to pay that for my air conditioner. When I paid them to come, look at it, assess it, figure out the problem, go to St. Charles, couldn't find it, go to Wentzville.
Okay, well, here.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying as far as documentation.
The idea is, we're, we're paying for some, uh, for some service that, that frequently we don't get because the people that we're, that we're being, that we're paying for are not in this city. Is that, is everybody agreed on that?
No, you can't compare plumbers with police officers.
Well, I'm not comparing, don't worry about plumbers.
That's a good comparison.
Part of the issue, I think.
Ask, ask, uh, ask Jeremy for a question. Does, does he see other police officers in our city when they're called for? I mean, there's a.
Right, there's other police officers that live here.
There's reciprocity agreements between police officers and different townships.
Well, you're correct.
So when there's a problem here in the city of Green Park, they have to come in here and help us out in the city of Green Park. So it goes back and forth.
Well, in, in my, in my mind, it's, it's down to this in my mind, I wish there were parameters and degrees for when you go out. I mean, if you've got an officer that needs your help, you got to get there quick, I get that, but when somebody shoplifted fifty dollars worth of jewelry, I don't see why our officer has to go to that, such up at Lima Ferry in Lindbergh. Four officers arrived for an accident, a friend of mine was up there. Our Green Park police officer got up there second or third, but he's the one that had to stay and finish it up at Lindbergh and Lima. The other three officers got to leave and that officer had to stay.
So you got two issues now. It's gone, it's gotten away from just several minutes. So you got two issues now. It's gone, it's gotten away from just supplemental contract. Now it's, it's the regular contract and whether people are tethered to the, you know, the geofence into Green Park.
Which doesn't involve the years.
Or can they go outside of Green Park and do mutual aid, like Ron was talking about? And so if you want to talk about both those things, then we'll put both of them on the agenda next time, and you'll just have to tell us whether, right now, you're going to tell us whether you want somebody who can speak to those issues from St. Louis County, or you want to discuss it amongst yourselves first and then go to the St. Louis County.
I think, I think we should discuss this among ourselves first and make a, make a decision, and then if, if we present it to St. Louis County, if they, if they want to counter, that's, that's a normal contract process.
Process.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, but if we don't take supplemental up to nine, are we logged into that for twenty-twenty-six?
You, you are right now because you have a contract. Until you amend that contract, you're going to, that's in...
And is there a time limit on when we need to amend that and not require them to?
Well, the sooner you amend it, the sooner you don't pay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, totally, totally.
If there's no requirement that, that either you or they amend the contract, I mean, if you want to cancel it for twenty-twenty-seven, you'd need to do it pretty much before June thirtieth of next year.
Yeah, no, we, we would never want to cancel the whole thing. I mean, you guys are invaluable. I, I just can't say that enough. I mean...
We're not talking about canceling the whole contract.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just telling you when that is, just so, you know, you don't say, oh, nobody told me.
You know, and it's with the utmost respect to the police that we want to discuss it. We're not trying to be disrespectful in any way doing this. It's what we're supposed to do. You know, we all, you know, we have, whatever, we have to do this.
I don't see any need to touch or any, 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 any kind of amounts at all, any kind of service at all, when it comes to police. There are safety nets. We need their safety. And seventy thousand dollars is not a whole lot of money.
Really?
It's not. It's not that much money. Not when you're talking about safety, you know?
For safety, much more important.
Joe, can we move on? Well, I'm just, for now, you guys have been talking, so I'm going to add my two cents in. I'm going to have to agree with Ron. The city's been corporate for thirty years. We've had St. Louis County. I don't see any problem with the way things are going now. I just want to carry on what we did for the last thirty years. Net picking or what-if or what-that, they're the professionals. They know what they're doing, so.
But we didn't do this for the last thirty years. We only had one officer.
Can I please, can I please?
We had one officer.
I understand that. It was an officer that had eight-hour shifts, but that doesn't mean the rest of the city at different hours weren't protected, kind of like the situation now with not having eight to, or midnight till eight in the morning. There are police that patrol our streets.
I think that's what we're saying. We're always protected by St. Louis County, but by nine-one-one.
Absolutely, so as far as this discussion about cutting this or trying to do this, I say we go ahead with what we have and carry on. I don't know how Marty feels, he hasn't said anything, and how Carol and Michael feel, and how Tammy.
I feel we're covered by nine-one-one call, and the supplemental is not...
And these guys put their life on the line, and we're not going to talk nickels and dimes. Okay? Marty, what, what's your thoughts?
No, I agree with you and Ron and Tammy.
Okay, so I think we need to just move forward on this.
I mean, if we do want to get to the extreme, we're smart about it.
Yeah.
Buy some Apple AirTags and put them on their cars so we can monitor ourselves, so, when they're coming and going.
Yeah, so these police officers do the best they can. When they're told to go to a certain spot, they can't say, no, I work for Green Park and we're here. It doesn't work that way. We're protected, period. So I say we move on and get this thing terminated.
So, we'll need, since I don't think Teresa and I know if it's on the agenda or not next time, somebody has to make a, a motion, or so that you make a motion, put it on the agenda, and next week we can talk about you do, police leaving the city and then police supplemental.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
And then we'll vote to see if it's going to be on the agenda or not.
I'll second that.
We need to vote on this, Paul?
Yeah, you probably need to roll them, because it's probably going to be close.
Okay, so we have a motion by Michael, a second by Carol. Ron?
None.
Tammy?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I zoned, literally zoned.
It's a motion to put on the agenda for next, the discussion of police leaving the city and police supplemental contracts.
So you're in favor of...
When you get back on, we need a little more discussion.
Okay, Marty?
I don't know.
So I'm a no, so it's a three-way tie?
Aye.
Well, they voted for it, to go through the contract.
So it's three-three.
Yeah. And I get a second vote at this time?
Depends on if you want to or not, because, because it's, obviously there's nothing sensitive. This is disrespectful.
I, I say we move ahead with the contract as is.
Yes, that's not...
Okay, so, so you're exercising your extra vote? Is that what? If I have one. Why, right now we got three to three.
You just exercised it.
And then as the mayor, he voted to break the tie.
You don't, you don't think a discussion would not be healthy at this point in time?
You're putting off what we got on, as far as the contract, and, like I said, this is a thirty-year city.
Well, with the discussion, there could be people that feel differently. I could feel differently after we discuss this. If it really wasn't discussed, I mean, I know you all got together, you and Teresa and, and whatever, but, you know, we really didn't discuss it, and we don't discuss this ever when it comes up. We just say yes. And as much as, it's not that I'm saying no, it's that it does need to be discussed for some valid points. I, I don't like you getting to vote twice where we don't get to discuss it. I think that's unfair. I know it's part of the game, and if you want to do that, that's fine, but I think it's disrespectful.
And I know this is not a game here. We're, we're talking about the security for the city and trying to save a few dollars here and there, and have control of when they're in the city or not is beyond our...
Joe, can I, can I maybe clarify something? I think, and if I'm wrong, but Paul said there's two different subjects. One is the supplemental, where we just don't feel that we need to pay for St. Louis County to come in and do a little bit of spot check, because we already get the benefits of a quick nine-one-one response from the amazing police officers who are in St. Louis County.
Why would you want spot checks?
I don't, it's a hidden miss. What's the chance of something going to happen just because they're going up and down the street? You know, if something happens, it gets called. Now, then there's the other half about monitoring our police officers. When this comes up, if you agree for discussion, I can tell you right now, I am not looking for monitoring Sandra and Jeremy. That is going to be a no for me. I...
And what is your, what is your point?
My, my only part, so there's a two-part thing. There's this monitoring and there's the supplemental patrol of St. Louis County police officers coming in and just going up and down our street for those short amount of times. That, I don't think we need to spend the taxpayer money on. If something happens, we call nine-one-one, and they aren't there in two split seconds. So I'm a yes, I'm a yes for getting rid of supplemental. I am a no for monitoring our police officer, our personal police officer. I think they do, we don't have to.
Different things on the table. We're not, we're not, we're not monitoring our police officers.
Those are two separate issues to talk about.
The, the county would be monitoring their in and out of the city.
Yeah, because the, the contract that we have...
I don't think a discussion differs anyone.
It's a healthy discussion, it's a healthy discussion.
We've been discussing it for a half an hour already.
We're here for ultimately to give our time for whatever amount it takes to do the right thing, or what we perceive as the right thing. We're not on a time...
Or you've never been for safety. You've never been for safety for our citizens.
Okay.
Never have you.
You know, and the thing is too, I believe you mentioned it's already written down, you know, as far as talking, what Michael Broughton's talking about, going out of the city. That's already in something, and I know we had requested that at one point, and you had mentioned it was already in the records. I guess it's a matter of seeing that, if that's possible, or what format that comes in, or...
Kathy, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, I mean, hi, I'm Kathy Mees. I'm the commander of that, the St. Louis Police. Just explain what, how that works.
Kathy, can you set up a, a stand by podium if you can hear me better?
I was taking notes back there. So how that works is that when Jeremy's not in, or you have the weekend patrol, someone comes in and does that patrol, and patrol the area of Green Park. So you're not without coverage at, at any time. Now, the nine-one-one that she speaks of is basically if something actually happens and they're not on patrol, you still have us as a police department come in and answer calls. The thing we talked about previously is that if Eric is able to come in from, excuse me, planning analysis to explain it further, what the supplemental is, we can have him do that at the next meeting.
And on, on the sheet that, that comes in every month, it says at the bottom, municipal contract patrols, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight average minutes, thirty-three, fifty-six. Is that the supplemental result?
And he'll explain that hour by hour, when they come in and what they do and what they patrol. So our, our cars are always in the city. They're monitored by cameras and everything like that, so it's not like they're out of the city, so.
So can we get up for discussion and allow them to...
So they'll come in next, next meeting and explain. If you want to do that, that's fine. I'll, you guys have questions and...
So have Eric come over with the contract?
Yeah, the, we had...
Can you ask him to come?
Yes.
I, I'll have him, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So do I retract my vote as far as the...
Well, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, Joe, you need to be broken, just leaving us a tie.
I mean, to me, it's, it's, you're talking nickels and dimes, or safety to me is more important than any, any amount of money. It's just how I feel.
And we may change our minds, yes.
Well, I mean, there's different ways of looking at it.
So we'll leave it at a three-three tie, and then next month we'll get some more information for the board to talk about, because Eric's just coming to explain.
And I can, and I can assure you, the officers are in your city.
Yeah, absolutely.
We will explain to you what the contract controls are, and then we can show you even when you're not getting those contract controls, we're in the city. Just as Jeremy spoke, we gave, given extra hours here when they were still in the actual air conditioning there, so you are getting those controls just for free.
And do you not have that gizmo there that shows us? Because Sandra showed me something, that it shows where everybody is kind of thing, which, yeah, there's, I get it.
You can see majority of most of the officers that are right in this area, you have coverage. You have coverage from fifty-five...
Which alludes to your nine-one-one calls. They're out there, they can get here quick.
But that's, that kind of backs us up on then the supplemental is not necessarily something we need, because we already get fabulous St. Louis County coverage.
And I'm not sure the supplemental was ever something that the St. Louis County Police Department brought to you. I think it was, the city wanted extra coverage, right, Ron? And said, we want to make sure, we want to ensure to our people that we get it. So, so it's not like they're good either way, they'll come to you either way. It's just you all have to decide if you think it's valuable.
And that was, that was added several years ago when we had funds coming in from Idaho.
Yeah, that's, that was what initiated the second police officer and everything that we did. Otherwise, we only had one forever, you know?
Well, we actually, we, we, we discussed having a third police officer. This was about five or six years ago. We thought about having a third police officer.
That's correct. It's been brought up since I've known it, that's right.
All right, let's move on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joe, I want to just say thank you to you for being open-minded and allowing us to...
Took the words out of my mouth, Joe.
So, citizens and comments and petitions, any citizens? Okay, we're going to do miscellaneous here? Any miscellaneous who want to be brought up? Anyone?
We are not going to have a Christmas party, correct? I think it's in our best interest to skip over the children's Christmas party this year, if I can mention.
I don't know why he would do that.
Pardon me?
I don't know why he would do that.
Do you want to do it and get the gifts and everything? We have no one to go shopping and, do you want to do that?
You can't get some, you can't get some residents to pitch in and help with that?
Do you want to do that?
Do you know how hard it was to get residents from a picnic?
Do you want to do that? You can be in charge of the Christmas party.
You can't get some people, the residents, to help out with that?
The residents that are involved, that are like the people that get involved, they did the picnic and they were all...
Can we talk about, can we talk about this positively? Can you talk about this positively?
Why, answering your question.
Can you talk about this positively? Can you get, can you get residents to do this?
Sure, give us a...
Yeah, I, I, the thing...
Can you get residents to do this?
No, we cannot, because they already did the picnic.
You're talking, you're talking about the dating again. You're talking about the dating.
Ron, let me, let me mention that I, I am totally against canceling it, but I was informed how difficult it's going to be at this time, and normally, I'm either here helping, I, I donate all the gifts every year. I do what I can. I can't do it this year. I can't do it.
Can you just, can you just not talk for a little while?
Sure, I can't do it this year.
You can still talk it.
You can do it.
Can you not talk for a while? Let me say something.
Sure, you go ahead and say something.
How much do we do for our residents? How much do we do for our residents? Do you know? How much do we do at Christmas time for our residents?
I know, because I'm usually here helping and I buy gifts for the kids. I help at the Bingos. I buy Bingo gifts. I do a lot. What do you do?
Let me ask you a question. Do we need to do a vote on whether we cancel it or keep it?
You know, this is something that, you know, I'm, it was, it was...
Can we, can we scale it down?
Oh, it, it was scaled down to bare bones when we talked about it, let's, let's do it.
No, I'm talking about, can we scale it down?
Joe, do we need to do that?
Can we scale it down?
I scaled it down to fun and quickness and not a lot of money. We would have had a great time, but I just, I don't think, you know, if you guys want to speak, we talked about it, Joe, that it may not be the best thing.
I think the last year they had Santa Claus here, cookies.
Oh, hot dogs and meatballs and...
Well, that was, yeah, that was good.
For golden hot dogs and meatballs?
We're going to scale it down for just cookies and possibly water or...
Can we get some, can we get some temporary help? Can we hire some temporary help and have them come in and help?
You want me to call like a, an agency?
Sure. Why not?
It's not...
Is that impossible to do?
It's not a difficult thing and have, you know, fresh fruits and things for kids, and it's pretty much a, you know, I had, the format I was going to use this year was a coloring contest and the thing with the tables that I did like four years in a row was a magnificent success with...
The thing is, we have two staff members currently.
And that, that's the problem, and I can't because of a personal...
Don't look for the problem, look for the solution.
I can't because, as again, I'm saying, I can't because of a personal issue that you, you guys know about, a personal issue, which I had to disengage.
Carol, what, so what if we told it way back? What if we did, you and I, the, listen, no donations, or no donations?
Can you get us Santa Claus?
You can't even just be here and like greet people.
No, and I already had shops for Santa Clauses. There's some great ones, but they're filling up really quick. Tommy Gardner is the greatest Santa Claus that the world will ever see. I know that he's doing better. We didn't ask him yet. I don't know if it's too late to ask him if you're going to do it, but Tommy Gardner is the Santa Claus of the century. Other than that, there's a couple in High Ridge. They come together for forty-five dollars an hour, which we only need of two hours.
We wouldn't even need that if you guys want us to scale back.
Well, they want Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. It's cute, but...
We're just looking at options right now, but why don't you just ask, why don't you just ask Tom Darner and see if he's Santa Claus?
Well, I was told that it was, I was told it's best not to have it, and, and my response to when I was told that, Ron, was good, because a personal issue came up in my personal life with my family that will make me unable to do it, and I was going to be struggling to do it. So that was the issue for me, so that you know.
So, so, so you said you can't do it, that, that means we can't have it?
Well, it means someone else has to take the reins here. I mean, I don't know what to say.
Okay, who, who you, you can...
Okay, let's, let's do this. Ron, I will reach out to three people that I know might help me do the Christmas party. Let's table it until next month, and I will reach out to three people.
Don't, don't table it to next month.
We can't focus on something unless we know we have the volunteers to run it. We have to have the volunteers to run it.
Well, first of all, let's get the Santa Claus.
No, that's not how it works.
Yeah, let's, let's... Yeah, let's get, let's get, let's get some kind of commitment.
All right, I'll reach out.
Yeah.
We can't hire Santa, we don't have any volunteers. So, Santa don't run it, because Santa's a big step.
Agreed.
All right.
Wait, let me ask a quick question from the upstairs. Do you think we could still get a seat if we can get the volunteers to run this thing?
You know, there's a lot of people, I can't imagine that Tommy wouldn't do, do it for us, I mean, Tommy's the most wonderful person...
And in your experience, you usually, do it in October, still enough time to grab somebody, even if Tommy's not available?
Well, you might be able to find someone. Also, my guy's gonna be calling you about the chair. So, when he calls you about that chair, that chair I got, you know, what, 15 years ago? We've been using that chair ever since. He redid it, he cushioned it, it's a Santa chair. When he calls, you need to tell him, yeah, we do need the chair, or we don't need the chair, but he will call.
Okay.
It's Dave.
All right, thank you.
Dave the Chair Guy.
Either that, or we can vote tonight that we do it next year, I don't know.
Now, one more question. Are we still having the Christmas light contest?
That's gonna be the next miscellaneous item.
That's really good, set Ron off.
That was presented to me at the same time, because if, if it's, it's kind of fun, the best fun that I ever had with that Christmas light stuff is someone I didn't know, her name was Jackie. Remember Jackie? The Alderman Jackie? Jackie, and I didn't know Jackie, and we decided, we couldn't get people to volunteer to do it, so the Alderman did it, but you couldn't do your ward, and I drove around with Jackie. We had the time of our lives, went out afterwards. It was a really, really nice thing for the Alderman to do. You know, I mean, if we can't get volunteers for that, we can always do it ourselves, and I have to tell you, it's really exciting. I started like a week or two in advance, 'cause there were so many really cool houses to look at.
I think what they brought up was that we can't hit the businesses again, or the prices, but I asked Joe, maybe we could pull a little bit of money out of the...
Oh, that was, I'm glad you said that. That was the fund. We talked about the fund.
We did.
Theresa said, 'cause I presented, can we do something where we don't have to ask them, and is there money that can be allocated? And you were gonna talk to Paul about doing that. It was called Something Fund?
Oh, this is gonna be for, for next year's budget. Remember, I was not a part of this year's budget.
Okay. I'm glad you said that.
I would like to create a holiday party fund or something?
A general for stuff.
A more generalized, of different items that can come out of it. Public Relations is what I wanna call it.
Well, do we know if we have a little bit of money where we can get gift cards for the lights?
The only way we can do it is if we pull it out of the Bingo money.
Well, first, I mean, when I heard how much we spent on Bingo, I was like, what? I run Bingo at my work, and I don't spend a...
Bingo should be scaled back to two times a year, and, and it's, it's a nice event, and it's fun, and they have so much fun, but as someone said, we didn't...
I think even monthly, you can still do a change.
We didn't offer free food, they probably wouldn't come.
You have two employees.
That's it.
Well, yeah. Okay, well, I told you I would help you, and I think I also have two other volunteers, so...
You wouldn't even do it.
That would be bad.
But we can table it until I can make sure I get the volunteers, how's that?
Okay.
So, my thought is, if, if we can't take it on, I don't know if Carol can help with that or not, or the residents...
Well, Carol does have something, you know, she, you know, personal going on right now.
Okay, I'm just saying, if we can't find myself, or since Carol's not doing it residence, then we won't do it, because I know you staff cannot be, take your time and do any of this stuff.
We're, you know, we're finding out that a lot of things were not done, because there was so much party planning going on.
Right. Well, that's not usually how it works, anybody else.
52, 57, I put up a Christmas tree, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we would, still need to put up a Christmas tree and all kinds of stuff.
You know, next year, I'll be more prepared to help and do this stuff.
Right.
But right now, it's just a no.
This came about because of the Christmas lights. Granted, there's no way we can go back to the businesses right now. They, they gave so generously for the 30th anniversary. But the best way to advertise the Christmas lights is to get a newsletter out. We have not done a newsletter in...
Quite a while.
Quite a while.
And you're not gonna have time to do that.
That's the issue.
Well, it can go out in a format of, of an advertisement, like paper.
A flyer.
A regular flyer, thank you. We can have it folded and out.
Not touch on any other issues, just the Christmas lights. Scale it way back. This is what we have time for right now.
Yep. I mean, I thought that the prices were pretty over the yawn anyway. I mean, maybe we could do, what, like a 250, a 200, or 150, or I don't know, something.
The businesses have always been very generous.
Yeah, it's, you know, we just can't hit them off.
Right. As I said, we didn't spend that much on Bingo. It just, just adjust, and to, they combined so many of the budgets into one, you know, could the Christmas lights be considered a special events? Probably. And then we can see how much money we have there, and how much of the work. But if you are going to do this, and you do want me to get a flyer out, we're gonna have to work with a printing company to be able to get it out in a timely manner, to get it to the residents in time.
And we got the postage.
So, I do not wanna wait until our November meeting to come back and ask for a vote.
Normally, it's done very early in December, the party, you know?
Well, I mean, isn't the only idea, question we have is if we do have the money for the gift cards? That's kind of what I would have.
You're talking about for the lights?
Could we, could we budget pretty high for the 30th?
Oh, we did.
Oh, yes, we have, Joe, we have 20,000.
Well, I mean, we can buy, we can buy some gift cards or...
If we can.
And we would need volunteers, you know, unless you, or members wanna do it.
Uh, we could really get Anne.
People canceled last year at the last minute.
Would you do it?
I watched Diane struggle to get volunteers to do it. As a matter of fact, the day of the event, someone called and canceled, and Kelsey and her husband drove in and, and became judges.
How many judges did they have, do you remember?
Um...
You used to have six.
I can count, you're right, it's six. I can do it this way. I'm good. It was six.
Would you be...
For the light show, which it's a blast. It is so much fun. I get out, I take my great pictures.
So, let me ask you a question. If we can't get anyone, and the Alderman, whoever wants to sign up, which, could we go judge more than one ward, as long as we did your own?
Yes. Okay, I have the problem with that.
So, I have to take someone, and I could judge...
It's actually a fun night out.
I could take someone to judge your ward and your ward, and you could get somebody to judge my ward or something.
Yeah, and who knows? Maybe some of the Aldermen. Maybe Michael would love to be in the car with me and drive around, looking at Christmas lights.
Oh, I would be a factor.
Taking pictures.
I'm pretty sure he's gonna take his part on this one. Okay, so, are we good for the lights? Can we do the lights?
I guess we need to figure out how much of the gift cards are gonna be.
Well, we can do that.
I'm hoping with your mind.
I second that.
Three first places, and then three second and three thirds, so...
Wait, what?
We'll know you.
You have to have...
We have nine total, three, three and three.
I always forget it's nine of them.
Yeah, you got three wards and three places in each ward, so...
Can we do first, second, third, and just combine all the wards together?
We just need to come up with an amount we'd like to see and get gift cards for them.
You thinking like a 50, 40, 30?
However you guys wanna do it. I mean, I know the gifts in the previous year are quite...
What were they?
I don't remember.
What were the amounts?
I don't remember, but it was crazy.
Well, that'll be, that'll be in our past newsletter, but you guys can look it up, yeah.
Yeah, but there was cash prizes of like $300, and then, oh, yeah, man.
Oh, I thought it was even...
Well, they split it up with every, you know, first place in each ward.
In each place.
So, it's like, say, a hundred bucks for each.
Second row, wow, like they get, it was $200 worth of gift cards, you know, and then third place with the, yeah. The businesses have always been very generous.
Yeah, so if you could do a hundred dollars a piece for first place, say, two for second, and 150 for third, I mean, depends on which you guys...
Didn't he go backwards on that?
Yeah, he did.
Something like that.
That's right.
It's getting late.
I understood you...
We've got a closed session here yet, so...
Okay, so, again, huh, starting from the top and going down?
Whatever you guys wanna do. I was saying, first place, a hundred dollars a piece there, possibly, and... Let's not be so generous.
They're not, well, they're not, we can't ask them.
I'm just making a suggestion, you guys could decide.